Manhattan City Commission for 27 August to order, and if you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to remind everyone, this is a work session, and we'll have the staff brief. Alonzo will lead us in the presentation. And then we have some people who have signed up, and others are certainly welcome to come forward. We take them in order of the sign up, and then as soon as those are done, you're welcome to come up and sign in and state your views on this topic. And just to again remind, one of the things we've done in the past year is to make sure we have time to allow everyone to have a voice. So we allow five minutes for each person to come up. There'll be a little timer up here on my right, your left. And you can see your time kind of tick down, and you give a warning at 30 seconds to the five minutes, and then another five minutes. So I'd ask you to be attentive to that so that everyone can have an opportunity who wants to speak tonight. So first, let's call on Alonzo, and we'll start the presentation on the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan update. Can you check that mic, Alonzo, just to make sure?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Dodson. Good evening, City Commissioners. We'll be diving back into Warner Memorial Park tonight and determine what direction we want to go in the completion of the master plan. So the objectives of the presentation, we're going to look to review the master plan process thus far, review some of the feedback that we heard from this governing body at last year's work session. Also going to review the suitability analysis of 10 properties. We're going to look at some Warner Park disc golf revisions, community feedback, and then wrap up with the proposed land management strategies that would be located within the final master plan. So there's been a lot of process during the master plan phase for Warner Memorial Park. For example, we held nine public meetings during the summer and fall of 2018. However, I would like to start when the Coral Berry concept was created and shared with the public in August of 2018. The concept received mixed reviews. Most of the residents around Warner Park found the proposed disc golf course expansion obtrusive and did not want the expansion to occur. On the other hand, the local disc golf community was excited because it was designed by John Howe, a well-known disc golf course designer. Additionally, a third 18-hole disc golf course in the community would open Manhattan to regional tournaments. The conversation of disc golf in Warner Memorial Park was then brought to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on October 1st, 2018. At that time, the park board recommended the Coral Berry concept for the Warner Memorial Park master plan with the removal of the disc golf expansion, the dog park, and the nature play space. The board had stated that, at that time, that Warner Park was not a suitable location for an 18-hole disc golf course. However, the board agreed that the existing nine-hole course should remain. So throughout this process, we heard these two visions. One side wanted the expansion to occur, and the other did not. However, a third vision was presented that night at the park board for the first time during the master plan process. And that was when a descendant of Kern Warner spoke of the park's intent when it was first dedicated in 1959. Mr. Warner's descendant wanted to see the road in the park reopened for public access, something that the residents have been opposed to for over 20 years. After the park board meeting of October 2018, the master plan process was then presented to the city commission at a work session on November 27, 2018. At that time, city staff presented the Coral Berry concept and a modified version of Coral Berry that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended. So at that time, the city commission raised a few questions and requested further information before making a decision on the Warner Memorial Park master plan. This governing body requested that staff provide further exploration of disc golf in Warner Park and other locations in the community. Staff was also asked to explore options to open the road within the park. And lastly, further research into claims of Native American burials in Warner Park was requested as well. So in the 1950s, the Mercury published claims of Native American burials in the park or possibly relocated to the park. Not long after that, November 2018 city commission work session, the state archaeologist, Robert Hord, with the Kansas Historical Society, was able to visit the park and inspected for burial locations. Mr. Hord was not able to find evidence of burials at that time. And I'd like to read a little bit of, a little excerpt of the email that he sent to staff, in which he states that, and I quote, "We found no archaeological evidence of any kind, excepting the military road. However, mounds can be quite subtle and may be present, but with that cautionary note, it is my opinion that there are no obvious cultural remains in the park save the military road. This is not to say no other cultural remains are present. Rather, there are no clear cultural resources that need to be considered in the planning stage of any earth-moving projects." So in starting the inventory process, staff decided to contain the search within the Manhattan urban area comprehensive plan. Within that plan, we analyzed existing parklands and city-owned lands for suitability for a championship level 18-hole disc golf course. So the parameters that were used were topography, vegetation, land area, adjacency to residential lots, ownership, existing uses, and parking. A matrix was created depicting these properties and parameters, which we will review here shortly. Additionally, we inventoried the current 18-hole disc golf courses in the area and asked park superintendents about safety and possible expansions at Tuttle Creek State Park and Fairmont Park, the portion that's owned by Riley County. The superintendents at both parks mentioned that since the implementation of the disc golf courses, there had been no reports of park users being hit by discs from the disc golf course users. Additionally, city staff inquired about possibly expanding the disc golf to 36 holes at either of these. However, in both instances, the superintendents mentioned that the lack of space would not allow for an additional 18-hole disc golf course at Tuttle Creek State Park or Fairmont Park, again, the portion that's owned by Riley County. And then lastly, city staff explored two alternative layouts of expanded disc golf at Warner Park with new parameters, which we will also review shortly. So here's the matrix that came about of the disc golf suitability. 10 sites were evaluated, again, based off of topography, vegetation, land area, adjacency to residential lots, ownership, existing uses, and parking. As you can see, the top three parks that scored the highest were Warner Memorial Park, Fairmont Park, the 40 acres that's owned by the city, and Northeast Park. In regards to topography, parcels were classified as mostly flat, mostly sloped, or a combination of the two. Slopes above 10% grade were deemed unsuitable due to comfort level of play and constructability of tee pads. Slopes above 10% could potentially be altered through regrading efforts and retaining walls. However, cost of construction and impact to the site would increase drastically with that kind of construction. Vegetation was based on a review of aerial photography, and parcels were classified as mostly open, mostly vegetated, or a combination of the two. Per PDGA Professional Disc Golf Association guidelines, you know, championship-level disc golf courses tend to contain a combination of open and vegetated areas to add an additional layer of complexity to the game. So per PDGA guidelines, a championship-level course requires 30 to 40 acres. A minimum of 30 acres was used to identify suitable parcels in this inventory exercise. And all parcels, all 10, exceeded this requirement. So then from there, the next step was to determine if each parcel had sufficient area of developable acres. So for example, Seaco Park has 97 acres. But with existing uses and elements to consider, the amount of developable land is less than 30 acres needed for an 18-hole disc golf course. For adjacency to residential lots, a penalty was given for sites that border residential lots due to potential for disc golf to affect nearby residents. So in the suitability matrix, the number of lots adjacent to developable acres or areas was multiplied by .1, then subtracted from the total score.
I have a quick question about that, based on your first statement. So the lots adjacent to developed areas, is that purely just the number of lots or also exposure those lots have? Because like, you take Northeast Park for example, like, you can't argue that they would have more exposure than what they would at Warner. So is it just pure number of lots?
Correct, just pure number of lots that are adjacent right to the property.
Okay.
So for example, out at Warner Park and the VMI track, each bordered 21 residential lots, so resulting in a 2.1 penalty. But you know, this potential conflict could be resolved through thoughtful design of the course, such as increasing that buffer between the course layout and the boundary. In regards to city ownership, the five properties inventory were city-owned parks, three were city-owned parcels, and two are parks owned by Riley County or Kansas State University. City ownership increased the suitability of a property due to ease of development and no additional acquisition costs. Of the 10 properties in the suitability study, two have existing disc golf courses. Fairmont Park, again owned by the city, Riley County, and Warner Memorial Park. Existing courses increased the suitability of a property due to presence of existing infrastructure for disc golf and name recognition of the park by disc golf users. Flood plane was also taken into consideration, and although the materials used for tees and baskets could withstand flooding, you know, the flood plane status could affect year-round playability. So properties located outside mapped flood planes were preferred for increased playability and potential to avoid flood-related maintenance and restoration. So for example, the city owns the 40 acres adjacent to the Kansas River there in Fairmont Park, and it ranks number two on the matrix. However, the fluctuating water levels of the Kansas River would adversely affect the playability during certain times of the year. Also, something to consider is that the current 18-hole course in Fairmont is affected by mosquitoes during the warmer months and can be a challenge to play. So similar, if not worse, conditions could be assumed with the city-owned 40 acres lot adjacent to the Kansas River. In regards to parking, we looked at current day-use parking, current tournament parking, and future parking identified within master plans. Parking availability increased the suitability of a property. So sites with existing parking for 10 or more vehicles scored highest, while sites with less than 10 spaces scored less. Current tournament parking was determined through the capability of each property to handle 100 vehicles, including overflow areas such as the field used for cross-country meets out at Warner Memorial Park. Future park, it could be used in a similar fashion. So future parking identified in current master plans was also taken into consideration. So based on the analysis of these 10 properties, Warner Memorial Park is rated the most suitable site for an 18-hole disc golf course. A separate review of park properties conducted by the Little Apple Disc Golf Club came to the same conclusion. That assessment was in your packets. Warner Park has consistently been the park site preferred by local players. A resident adjacent to Warner Memorial Park provided staff with a report outlining an alternative site recommendation out at Roger Schultz Community Park that was also in your packet. Staff does not recommend Schultz Park for the 18-hole disc golf course due to excessively steep terrain and an inadequate area for course development. Additionally, the area that was outlined within that proposal is, was mapped out at about 24 acres. Additionally, if we did go back to Roger Schultz for disc golf, a master plan which was developed over two years with public input, we would have to revisit that all over again. So because of the questions raised by this governing body in last year's work session, and Warner Memorial Park has still been identified as the most suitable for an 18-hole disc golf course, staff revisited the disc golf layout of Coral Berry and explored options of opening Warner Park Road. But before we get into those plans, I'd like to revisit quickly the current existing, the current conditions that exist out at Warner Park. So this is Target, north is up. The two parking lots, the one on the south west side of the park can handle about 15 to 20 cars. The one out here on the east side, 12 to 10. The current core, the current layout of the cross-country, the area that's used by the cross-country team is here on the west side of the park. This here in the middle is the ravine, which isn't much playable. There are some rogue trails within there, but we try, park staff tries to avoid any kind of rogue trails within that area. The old military trail does flow here to the west of the existing disc golf area. And then Boy Scout Trail goes here through the north, bordering about four different properties on the north side. So as a reminder to the city commission of the Coral Berry concept, I'll give a quick recap of what was presented back in August when we went to the park board and then to the city commission. So this was Coral Berry, which contains the design by John Howe. Throughout the process, we heard, we tripped a lot back. Those first two concepts had a lot going on. What we heard is that the community didn't want to see so much happening at Warner Park because of the natural aesthetic. Within this concept, we looked to keep the natural play space, the dog park, a ravine bridge that would complete the loop around the park for trails. That was something that was identified as being desirable within Warner Park. We also looked at Rock Creek Gardens, which would look to address any kind of erosion control that occurs throughout the, some of the steep ravines. And then we would look to enhance the existing shelter here and here. And then a new restroom shelter and expanded parking was proposed here on the northeast side. The new disc golf course layout was projected to rearrange this existing nine. So you could start here, if you wanted to do the first nine, you could start at the parking that area, hit one through nine, and you're back at the parking spot, at the parking lot. If you wanted to continue, you could then go through and complete the 18, and it would take you back to the, to the parking lot. Similar to what you see in any kind of regular golf course. So when this was presented, when this concept was presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, they recommended an alternate, an altered Coral Berry concept. And that's, again, this recommendation was everything in Coral Berry except the playground, the dog park, and the expansion of the disc golf course. So this was what was recommended by the advisory board to this governing body. So when we were moving forward with the next phase, when we heard back, when we heard from this governing body on the direction we wanted to go, we developed a couple of concepts moving forward. Some of the things we heard was opening up the road. And so this first concept, you know, we don't want to just open the road just because, just to open the road. You know, what is, what is, what are we getting to? We do have an existing shelter that could be revitalized. We could implement a restroom. And so we would open up the road, but shorten it a little bit. Currently, the road extends further into the park. However, something to consider in this scenario is that if this is open, and something that they had issues in the past was people could just come out here in their four-by-fours and just tear up the prairie. So something to consider in this, in this option, in both A and B with the extensions, is that we would need to block either through natural stone or some sort of steel tubing, and block on both sides and direct traffic around this area. Something else to consider is buffering, adding a few more feet on the north side. Currently, the way that the original Coral Berry layout was done with the disc golf was 30 feet. That was the distance from the layout to the boundary. With this, we're looking to increase that to 50. There is quite a, something to keep in mind is that this is very heavily vegetated. Something that we adjusted with this also and was the layouts of four, five, and six that were done in the original Coral Berry. When we went out to the public with this, we heard a lot that that was getting into the prairie. That was going to cross with the cross-country course. However, one of the parameters that we instilled with Howe is that those fairways shouldn't cross any of those trails. And so we did something similar here. So then the other concept looks at further buffering that line on the north side with those four residential lots here. So what would happen in this scenario would be that Boy Scout Trail would be moved to the north to create, to enhance that buffer, and then push the fairway to the south of the trail. Again, not crossing any of the trails with the fairways and keeping it, and providing more buffer to that north edge. Additionally, we would stay out of that cross-country route. Again, something that we heard as a potential compromise moving forward would be taking out those four, five, and six and shifting them to the east. This concept looks at a little bit shorter roadway. Doesn't quite get to the existing shelter here. However, it's not as, it doesn't go as far in, and it's a little bit more exposed as well. So please keep in mind that the two alternates for the disc golf course layout that we just saw here in A and B are just examples of what can be done. They were designed in-house with exploration purposes per PDGA guidelines. It doesn't mean that one or the other has to be chosen. If this governing body decides to expand disc golf as part of the master plan, staff would interact with John Howe for a partial redesign with the new set of parameters approved by the city commission. Concepts A and B were shared with John Howe and the Little Apple Disc Golf Club. Mr. Howe mentioned that the rerouting of holes four through eight from the original design can be done. The Disc Golf Club was supportive of Mr. Howe's assessment. Additionally, staff invited residents who have been involved in the master plan process to the August 5th Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting. Staff previewed this presentation at the park board, and residents were given the opportunity to express their concerns.
Alfonso, would you, you mentioned that the park board saw it again on August the 5th earlier this month. Well, beyond just reviewing it, what was their conclusion?
Staff didn't give, didn't ask the park board for a further recommendation. They had already made their recommendation back in October. It was more of a courtesy to let them know what we were presenting here to the city commission.
Because I didn't, I couldn't find their minutes yet, so, all right, thanks.
So once we get direction of where we want to go with disc golf, the expansion of disc golf, opening the road, the ultimate goal of this process is creating a master plan document. And part of that is going to contain the proposed land management strategies. Currently, trash is picked up from the entrances two to three times a week. Every three to four weeks, the eastern meadow, where the existing disc golf course is located, and Warner Park road area are mowed. During the warmer months, the cross-country trails are mowed about once a month, and the pond area is mowed twice a year. And then once a year, the western meadow is hayed and honeysuckle abatement occurs along the trails. However, part of this new land management of Warner Memorial Park will explore reducing mowing of the prairie meadow and restore prairie areas to increase pollinator diversity. In this, on this western half of Warner Park, there was a multi-year study with a PhD student at K-State who looked into pollinator biodiversity. And we're going to partner with, with, we're going to use that student's report and try to implement these, these types of land management strategies, not only in Warner Park, but also Roger Schultz. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone else has and about the process thus far. I'll leave you with this slide. What we're looking, staff is looking for a recommendation on, on what to do with the master plan moving forward. You know, the development of the 18-hole disc golf course, do we want to see that expanded moving forward? And then options to reopen Warner Park to vehicular traffic.
I have two quick questions. First, on concept B with the road, well, I would actually say concept A with the road, I liked how that was presented because initially my, one of my concerns with Warner Park had always been if you had, we had ADA accessible issues, honestly, right? There was no way to get to the shelter, enjoy the park like everybody else could. So I think concept A addresses that, but why on concept B can the road not make it to the shelter?
So one of the things that we heard a lot from the residents was just the, when the road was open, the amount of vandalism, parties that were occurring in this area. With this, with this concept, you're a little bit further into the park, you're a little bit more secluded. If you, I mean, from this location here, from the parking, from the parking lot, you wouldn't be able to see the very end.
So it's not necessarily an infrastructure issue. It's more of just, we're trying to provide an alternate of the road going forward.
Correct.
So technically, we could say, I could say I like concept B the best, but I would like the road to go to the shelter. Okay, second question. On, this is for both concept A and B. When you move the disc golf course into that vegetation, how much of that, how much of that would need to be removed?
So that will range, and what it is, is it's more of removal of the understory. So if you go to this north area of Warner Park, there's a lot of honeysuckle, there's a lot of underbrush. There, it's speckled in there with red cedar as well. In the, in designing these fairways, the way that John does it is he uses the existing hardwoods. Anything big and some sort of challenge, he would leave it there. So though, that type of corridor could range anywhere from 10 feet to 30 feet. But again, leaving the hardwoods in place and clearing out just the understory.
So range seven right there, right in the middle. We're not going to be cutting down any new trees to make that? The one that goes right, yeah, right in the middle.
If it's a, if it's a... If it's a, if it's a, a red cedar or invasive species.
We had already planned on doing that, so, okay. But if it's not a red cedar or an invasive species, we didn't, and it's a tree, we're not going to cut it down.
No, that would be something that we would work with the city forester, uh, Jay David. And in the creation of these, the way that John, uh, creates these fairways, he comes back and carves it himself. He marks trees that would be taken down. Um, if it's a small sapling, perhaps it would go, but anything big, it's something we would want to. And, and again, maybe that's something within the new set of parameters. If this governing body decides to move forward with expansion, maybe we could put that as a parameter that a certain, uh, width of a tree, a certain caliper can't be touched.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. So when you looked at, uh, Roger, uh, Roger Schultz Park, that we still, we had a plan for that, but we haven't really moved forward with anything. What would be the cost? You said there was a heavy cost of construction, uh, compared to Warner Park. What was that estimated at? It may have been in the packet, I may have missed it.
No, we haven't looked into the cost at Roger Schultz itself. Uh, we did look at the cost here at, uh, at Warner Park. However, the cost that would be, uh, would be, uh, the highest out there because of the topography, because of being over ten percent, would be carving out that flat space. Uh, so looking to, to take out that area, uh, creating trails which would need, uh, some sort of, uh, banking as well, uh, through the area. Um, and so retaining walls could be a possibility if we're going to have issues with erosion. Uh, it's definitely a possibility once you start to disturb that, uh, those slopes out there. Uh, retaining walls could be quite expensive. But it's something that if, if we go down that direction, it's something we could look into further.
So are retaining walls not part of the plan that we had for Roger Schultz Park?
Correct.
In any phase?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And I, I have more comments, but I'll wait for public comment first. Alfonso, I wondered, um, in the materials, it talks about a conservation easement next to Schultz Park. How big is it?
Conservation easement, I'm not. I'm not too sure what exactly you're referring to, Commissioner.
There was a, I don't know, there's something in our material that says that there's a conservation easement, I think, south of Roger Schultz Park. That could be, um, a part of the solution is how I read it. But I don't know what a conservation easement can be used for either.
Scenic Meadows?
Yeah, so the conservation easement that I believe you're referring to that's south of, of Schultz Park is the scenic meadows tracks.
Okay.
That this commission previous, it's track B that this commission previously authorized the city to accept in donation.
Right.
We're still working with that landowner to make that transfer happen. Uh, but the intent when that decision was made would be that that tract would become essentially part of the Schultz Park.
Trails and.
Yeah, it would involve trails. I mean, the conservation easement, uh, was set in place as part of that residential plat.
Right.
And it was essentially unbuildable ground, the ground that they couldn't build homes on.
Sure.
And so they set that aside as a, a conservation easement.
And it's not that much more rough terrain than some of the other of Schultz Park, right?
It, it's very similar terrain. We actually planned that tract because that, the plat, even, even without public ownership of that tract, the plat gave the city the right to construct trails.
Right.
And so we planned that parcel, that tract in combination with the Schultz property.
Sure.
And so we, so the master plan for the Schultz Park shows trails going through that area to connect those neighborhoods.
Okay. And how big is it was my original question?
That track B, it's in the, I don't, I don't know, I have, I could look that up.
I was just curious, it's not a hundred acres or.
It's in the thirty, thirty acre range.
So in addition to the size of the Schultz Park, there's another thirty then for the conservation easement.
Correct.
Okay. It seemed to me that the Schultz Park and the, um, Warner Park master plans were being developed about the same time. Um, the Schultz Master Park Plan was adopted in September of 2018 and the Warner Park was coming, uh, to the commission, I think, in, uh, October of eighteen. So they were pretty simultaneous. And seems my, uh, real gauge about master parks, master plans for parks is City Park and how that has drug on for a number of years now and never been completed. Um, so, you know, a plan can be changed or the park can be changed before the plan is finalized would be one way to look at it. With regard to your matrix, it seemed to me that the only thing that skewed, um, Warner Park to a higher score were, was the existing use or current use. And, um, I could see us leaving the nine-hole, uh, disc golf at Warner Park as it is and not changing that and still installing an eighteen-hole at the Schultz Park, uh, before, as a way to solve some of this.
I'm going to stop you right there, Commissioner. Uh, again, that the Roger Schultz Community Park, that master plan process, the public process was over two years. Disc golf did not rank anywhere near high on that desirability in that park because Warner Park was just down the road.
Yep.
Um, and we would have to go back to that process all over again. We would have to restart this conversation again. We couldn't just go in there and plop down an eighteen-hole disc golf course. We would have to start that pub, public process again, reach out to see if there's any kind of support from the residents, from the community to go into Roger Schultz.
Well, those were my questions, so I just wanted to.
And I wanted to expand a little bit on.
Get started on them.
And you had pointed out the, uh, existing disc golf course, uh, parameter. For argument's sake, let's say that that doesn't matter. We're going to redo the current nine-hole anyway. I've heard that argument before, so let's go ahead and take that out. Warner Park still ranked six point nine, Northeast six, and Roger Schultz five point six. So Schultz comes into the top three rankings at that point. But the data still points to Warner Memorial Park as being the most suitable for disc golf, uh, for the disc golf course expansion.
Any more comments or questions or?
On Fairmont Park, uh, when you, I was really only looking at Fairmont and Warner since they were fairly close.
Yeah.
Um, for the future, how, how many would you happen to know? How many available spark parking spaces are at Fairmont now?
Yeah, it's just over a hundred. It's just over a hundred at, at Warner. Um, it's right around a hundred out, out at Northeast Park as well. It's fairly spaced out.
So they all have similar current parking situations?
Yes.
And so the main difference between Fairmont and Warner would be that we didn't give a point to Fairmont because it's not in the master plan to expand that?
Correct, because that, that part of the master plan, that's Riley County. I believe they do have a master plan. Um, I'd have to look at what their expansion of parking would look like. Uh, but, I mean, that's another argument that could be done also within that parking is the current day use parking. You know, does the current Warner Park, uh, Warner Memorial Park parking, is it adequate for, for what we have now? Some would say yes, some would say no. So if we gave Warner Park the same number as Roger Schultz, point five, Warner Park would still tie first to be the most suitable for disc golf.
Can you remind us of, uh, how many holes, how many courses are required for what you'd consider a competition? In other words, if you establish this like Emporia, how many holes would you require to have this kind of, uh, competition?
Ideally, any, uh, more than three. Three would be the minimum, three.
Three times eighteen?
Three eighteen hole, yeah, three eighteen-hole courses.
And how many do we have?
So we have the one at Fairmont Park, which is an eighteen-hole. Uh, the one at Tuttle Creek, which is another eighteen. Uh, out at, uh, University Park, far north, uh, thirty minutes, uh, there's an eighteen-hole course there. I believe it's a pay-to-play there. Uh, fairly open, there's some nice slopes out there. And then the nine-hole course that we have here at Warner Memorial Park.
Okay, I do have one more question.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I guess I didn't realize there were already eighteen holes at Fairmont. So the thirty-plus acre parcel at Fairmont that we gave it a point for, is that also currently where the current eighteen-hole? Like, are we talking about like, if we were to put an additional park out there, we'd essentially be putting two courses on top of each other?
I'm going to pull up the maps that were created. Okay, here at Fairmont, to answer your question, Commissioner, this layout here, uh, let's go into. This layout here is the current nine-hole course. One, that first, looks like that first, uh, that first, uh, tea and basket are within city property. City property is here on this, this front forty that's adjacent to the Kansas River.
Got it.
Most of the existing course there is on the Riley County side. And so there'd be an overlap a little bit here. However, this little trail here is a, uh, is kind of a levee. And so most of this is, is, it's, there's a lot of, of road trails in there. It's really nice walk.
I walk it all the time. That's like really dense vegetation. Those are big trees.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
All right, now, Alfonso, I think, uh, it'd be a good idea to hear from the public and then we'll come back to you and, uh, after that, all right?
All right.
Thank you. So we have James McElvee, or McVeigh, is it?
That's right.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, James McVeigh, twenty-three fifty-one Grandview Terrace. Um, I've got three main points for why I think you all should vote to expand the disc golf course at Warner Park. First, one of the key questions facing this community is how we plan on offsetting the loss of revenue from the country stampede. I think a championship-level disc golf course would be a great way to help make Manhattan, Kansas, a disc golf destination. Emporia does over five million dollars in revenue from one of their tournaments, the Glass Blown Open. And to clarify a little bit, Emporia has around eight to nine courses within the city limits that they use to operate large tournaments and host multiple divisions. So they'll have a division for, uh, women, men, advanced, recreational, uh, older folks, younger folks, the juniors. They also have tournaments like the Junior Worlds or the Dynamic Disc Open. All of these bring in additional revenue to the city. Secondly, the Disc Golf Club, Little Apple Disc Golf Club, has been trying to meet both the city and the neighborhood halfway. So the city, the last time we were up here speaking, asked us to look at other parks. We went out to all of the other parks that were available. We did the work of creating a citizen's report, including photographs, including studies of these parts from a disc golfer's perspective, of what makes a good disc golf course and a bad disc golf course. We found the exact same thing that the city did, that Warner would be best. Um, we would be open to the possibility of Roger Schultz Park, but it would require a massive investment of infrastructure that does not already exist just to make it playable and even walkable. Uh, we had a hard time even just walking around that park to do the report, to try to get, uh, access to find the information we need. And additionally, we would then face the exact same set of fights. A new set of concerns from a new set of neighbors who are voicing that they don't want this in their backyard. That they want it to be a neighborhood park and not a community park. So we've been trying to meet the neighbors halfway. They said they didn't want the, uh, disc golf fairways to go close to the running trails or to the property lines. We met with the Parks and Rec to review the new plan. We approved that. We said that would be a good idea. We're willing to be flexible in this. We're trying to meet the neighbors halfway. But it's starting to feel a little bit like Charlie Brown with the football. And when we cross a new barrier, the ball just keeps getting snatched away and we're left trying to kick at something that just doesn't exist. So we've been trying to meet the neighborhood halfway and the city halfway. We'd really appreciate, uh, if the neighbors would do the same thing and try to meet us on these concerns for how to get this park developed. And my third point is that we have widespread support for a disc golf course expansion at Warner Park. Um, I brought with me two copies of an online petition that was started to expand the disc golf course at Warner Park. It got over three hundred and twenty supporters. Uh, these are both people who are local and out of town. Um, these are people who would come spend money at our gas stations, at our restaurants, and at our hotels. I think this is overall just a clear win for the community. Um, and I thank you and urge your support for the expansion of the course at Warner Park.
Thanks, James. You can give that to the city clerk if you would. Larry, I can't, I'm sorry about your handwriting, get.
Even if it was clear about handwriting, you have trouble with that.
All right.
It's McGilvery.
Yeah, okay, good.
I'm Larry McGilvery from three zero nine Pliscan Lane. One thing that I think is kind of really needs to come to bear with a lot of weight is John Houck's design stands on its own merit. This is a person who's the foremost expert in our nation in developing disc golf courses. He's developed them in difficult urban situations. He's developed them in nature preserves where he had to work with the Audubon Society. This is a man that knows how to reach the, the sensitive type issues that can be involved with properties. He's done that with Warner. He is your professional, he's your expert. He was a former touring pro. He's not just some guy that came out of the woods and started coming up with designs. He, and he still plays, he's still a very good player. One thing is this question for the commissioners and I'd like you to pointedly ask these two guys right here, this question afterwards. In the last little over a year, where is John Houck? Why has John Houck not been brought before you personally to talk to you and answer your questions? The absolute expert on this design. Why was he intentionally not placed before you or the Park Advisory Board? So that's something I'd like you to have these guys answer for us. I'm kind of hoping, this is really short on my part. I'm really hoping that the commission can glean the facts from the chaff, from the supposition, the innuendo, and the hysterics that you're going to hear. The facts are the ones you've heard from your parks folks, that's data they've done. You've heard the facts from John Houck, a professional that's looked at the property. You have ten years' worth of surveys and results that were pointing toward Warner Park. So there's, there's an elephant somewhere in the background that's making decisions that's not based on fact and, and data. I'll hold this up for you. I'm, I'm a data analyst. This has been on the wall in my office for over fifteen years.
You're going to have to read it. I can't see it.
Well, I have no idea where I found this quote from. It's wisdom. Wisdom is, means acting with knowledge while doubting what you know. It entails balancing your arrogance and insecurity. Adopt an attitude of wisdom. And I had a question for the commissioners, this is participation level on your part. How many of our commissioners have witnessed disc golf firsthand?
Have what?
Watched it being played firsthand.
Larry, one of the things we don't do under the rules is ask the commissioner questions.
Okay, well, okay. How many, how many of our commissioners have even held one of these discs? Okay? Okay? How many have ever played? Okay? So, who is the expert on the feasibility for this course? It's John Howke. It's your park board that's bringing you data. We saw the suitability study for Warner was on there. I had a question as far as Alfonso can answer afterwards. We got a minus two-point-one for Warner because of adjacent lots. I think we need to know, was that before or after their Plan B of moving the bigger buffer zone? Because I think that makes a huge difference on how intrusive that may seem to the border We talked a little bit about Fairmont. That area that's on the backside of that levee is extremely flood-prone. Even in a dry year, it's the mosquito heaven. This year, we have not played Fairmont Disc Golf since May. You can't play it. It's, the regular course is just completely covered with mosquitoes. The Schultz property...
Let us do that from here, if you will. We're trying to be civil in here.
Thank the commissioners for allowing us to visit about this issue. My name is Tom Holcomb. I live at thirty twenty-seven Cherry Hill. Our property backs up to Warner Park. It occurs to me that sometimes the best thing to do is to do nothing. And when we bought the property where we live, it was our understanding that that was to be a natural park. And a natural park, to me, is as it is now. So, in our conversations, in our meetings, several times, I've said, "Please, just leave it alone. It's a beautiful park. There are wild animals out there. We enjoy watching them. We enjoy the park and walking through the park." It seems to come down to the property owners, the ones that pay taxes. We would like to have the park left alone. There are people that want to have the disc golf. I have nothing against disc golf. I am a golfer myself. But that particular piece of property is, is something that Manhattan should love and take care of, and leave it as a natural park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Brown, a Manhattan resident, K-State graduate of fifty-four. We came to Manhattan in seventy-two, and Roger Schultz was our finished carpenter that did the work on the home that we bought at that time. We later moved to North Dartmouth, where our family enjoyed a great deal of Warner Park, summer and winter. The small children appreciated the wilderness of it. It is a memorial park. That's what it was intended to be. I believe that the Schultz family are very interested in golf and would appreciate, I think they would appreciate, disc golf being developed at the Roger Schultz Memorial Park. I pay money to play regular golf, and I appreciate the expense of maintaining a golf course, and I would assume that the disc golf course would be a similar phenomenon. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Bob Haynes, please. Mr. Haynes.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you again. I really appreciate what the park board has done since the last time we met, trying to figure out a way to make this thing work. And a couple of things that I want to mention one more time. When it was open to vehicular traffic, everything, all the infrastructure that was there was destroyed. And it, once they, once they closed the, you can't drive in there, people that are interested in walking and are interested in nature don't tear things up. They'll walk in. If you, if you have to drive in, then you can bring your keg and all your friends and hoop it up. So, I, I'm, I want to just emphasize again that that, that was a mistake before, and it was a great thing to eliminate. I'm involved in, you were talking about the conservation easements. We've put conservation easements on almost eleven-hundred acres of land, and not, and you can't play disc golf on it, but we have a gem there. When, when the founding fathers of Manhattan laid out the city park, and I was glad for your comments about that, every year, and I've been here a long time, every year, somebody has something they want to build in the city park, and it's been resisted extremely well. The only thing that, that I have a problem with now is all the, all the parking that used to be for baseball diamonds, and now it's for Aggieville patrons. I'm off the, I'm off the track, I'm sorry. We have, I've walked many, many hours in that park. And when you talk about in the draw, that's all glacial fill in there, and that if you think you're gonna stabilize that, and I'm sorry you couldn't ask Don Combs about it, because he worked tirelessly, and the, and the park board was very helpful. They, he did all the labor, and they, they paid for many of the materials. The trails that are there now are wonderful. People, people like to run over there. The cross-country meets are, are fun. I just, mostly, I want to say, I appreciate the tough decision that you have to make, and how hard people have worked on both sides to try to get their point across. I hope that you come to a conclusion that will, that fifty years from now, you'll all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Dodson, commissioners, thank you so much for having us. I just wanted to make a quick comment in support of the expansion of disc golf at Warner Memorial. I'm not from Manhattan. I'm not from Kansas. I'm a military veteran, and my wife is currently serving active duty at Fort Riley. So, we've moved all over our years in the military, and we will eventually move on from here as well, as, as it goes. But I've been playing disc golf for a few years, and I've gotten a chance to play disc golf all over the country, including John Howke-designed courses is actually what I learned to play disc golf on. So, that was the high standard that was set for me. I didn't realize that there was anything other than that. But what I wanted to mention today is, we're already, we already have a nine-hole course at Warner. Expanding that to eighteen is not gonna change disc golfers being in that area, right? All disc golf is, is going on a hike and throwing a frisbee. That's the only difference between hiking and disc golf, honestly. Requires very little maintenance, definitely nowhere near that of ball golf. We play in nature. We play with tall weeds. We play with trees. That's part of the game. It adds challenge to the game. I did want to, to mention a couple of things. Parks are for people to get outside and enjoy them. That's why we made parks. If we didn't have parks, it would just all be wilderness, and we would all be going out in wilderness or staying in our homes. So, the idea of a park staying stagnant and never changing to meet the demands of a changing demographic and population, to me, is ridiculous. I'm pretty sure that we all pay taxes, not just those people who live near and adjacent to Warner Memorial. Change is progress. Manhattan's changed a lot over the years. It's changed since I've been here. Having a sport, even though it's a minority sport, that is bringing more people outside into the great outdoors and enjoying what Manhattan has to offer, is a good thing. And I totally back what Mr. McVeigh said about having another eighteen championship-level course here and the money that it could truly bring to the city of Manhattan. Disc golfers, we drive. We go to courses. If they're good, we will take a day trip or a weekend trip to go there, even if there's not a tournament. So, I just thank you guys again for your, for your attention, and please consider the expansion. Thank you again.
Thank you. So, those are all the folks who signed up on the list, so now, anyone else who wants to come forward, please do so, and just let us know where you're from and your name, and if you'd, is the list still up there, Gary?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we line up or...
You don't have to line up, sorry. You can just get up whenever you, you want.
I just had a couple of points that I wanted to continue to make that I had written, basically, to the letter to the editor last fall when this was first proposed. And also, I'm just going to leave some information with you as well. I'm still kind of disappointed with the communications between the Parks and Rec or planner and the neighborhood people. Why were the disc golf, people notified of the, of the new plan, but we weren't able to have our own input? I'm also a little bit concerned about the barrier. I feel like fifty feet is not enough. In my research here, the average thrown disc from a person that's twenty-six to twenty-nine, the highest percentage is three hundred feet. So, fifty feet does not even come close to providing a safety barrier. And unlike Seco Park, there's a street that, that is a barrier between the park use and the homeowners. City Park as well. Annenberg, there is a woodland barrier, and even like their baseball park and stuff is not even close to any of the homeowners. And we have protection for those kinds of areas for baseballs. There's fences, there's things like that, but I do not feel like any of those kinds of safety considerations have been made for Warner Park.
We didn't, I don't think we cut your name, I'm sorry.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jenny Foltz, two seventeen Carlisle Terrace.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave.
And you live close to Warner, border?
One of the four properties.
You can give those to the...
Adjacent to the park. And I have kids who like to play outside. There's a survey on there that tells about the average pros by age.
Good afternoon. My name's Rufus Bandi, three zero zero five Cherry Hill. I appreciate you letting me speak. I wrote notes down, so I don't get off track. We are here this afternoon to decide whether Warner Park is the best place for an eighteen-hole disc golf course. To be able to do that, we need alternatives. And alternatives should be considered. I believe Roger Schultz is a better choice, or we wait until a property becomes available that the city can put a course in. We all know the history of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board voting unanimously against the disc golf in Warner Park. They didn't mention a survey, you talk about surveys, they did a survey on the Warner Park Master Plan of eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight people, of which one-hundred-and-six lived adjacent to the park. So, that's twelve-point-six percent that live adjacent. But these eight-hundred-and-thirty-six people, they ranked expanding the disc golf course thirteen out of seventeen choices. So, you talk about the, the desires and the surveys, they did one. He didn't mention that. Even with those two things and some others, the planning staff came before your commissioners last November twenty-seventh with the disc golf expansion included in the Coral Berry Plan. You asked them for other options. They came back today with Warner Park. Can you put up the matrix?
Put that up, Alfonso.
I wasn't surprised that the matrix came out with Warner Park on top, but I want to look at a few things on it. Warner Park got a one for having an existing disc golf course, although they plan on taking that existing golf course out and actually having to take out the pads and the baskets. So, I don't know why that's any kind of an advantage. Warner Park got one for developable areas, yet Roger Schultz has never been analyzed by a paid professional the way they did in Warner Park. And I totally disagree, and I'll go into this a little bit later, about the terrain at Schultz, because I've walked it, and I'd like to go out, but you guys have walked it, by the way. Warner Park got one-point-five points for current parking, which makes, means nothing, because Schultz is gonna have sixty spaces with ADA-accessible spaces. So, why does it matter what the current parking is? That's two points right there. Probably, if you're gonna talk about parking, Schultz should get more points than any place else. So, right there, I mean, that's three-point-five points, which puts Roger Schultz at nine-point-one, if you want to go by that kind of a matrix. Plus, they didn't talk about playgrounds, water, shade. Those kind of things could all go into Roger Schultz, too. So, I think this matrix is flawed. I spent hours walking Roger Schultz, and this was last November, December, when there weren't any bugs, so I bushwhacked all over that place. And the Roger Schultz Master Plan has some great topographical maps, so I was able to get oriented and go around in there. First time I walked it, I thought, "This is the answer. It's the perfect spot. It's not developed. They're gonna have all this stuff up there." And I thought the disc golf people would embrace it. And you know how when you get excited about something, and then it kind of crashes? Well, that's kind of what I'm going through. I think that Schultz has the advantages, not only of its potential terrain for an amazing course, it's gonna have bicycle and car access that Warner Park doesn't have, because you can come right up from Annenberg, up the new trail on a bike, and you try to get to Warner Park on a bike. Can't do it. You've got to go up through Stag Hill and around. It's gonna have better parking. It's gonna have amenities like bathrooms and a playground. And the impact on the adjacent homeowners, there's no comparison, because here, when you go between the ravine and Warner Park and those homeowners on the north, there's no space in there. There'd be discs flying in their backyard. I play disc golf, and unfortunately, I'm not that good, so I don't always know where the discs are gonna go. That's just the way it is. At Schultz, and I put this in my, my note, the houses are way up on the ridge lines. When you, when you just look at a map... Has it been five minutes?
Yep.
Whoa. Anyway, I think there was a mistake in the Roger Schultz Master Plan. I think you guys can get it corrected by having a professional go out there.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Mok, M-O-C-K. I live at thirty forty-five Geneva Drive, here in Manhattan. My property does not join this area, but I do feel for those whose property does in this issue. I like everyone here to know that I appreciate and hear the passion of those supporting the disc golf. It sounds fun. I'd like to try it sometime, but not, not at Warner Park. I'd like to invite everyone in the room to listen to the dis... I'd like to invite everyone in the room to listen to the description by our city of Warner Park. Situated in the southwestern part of the city, Warner Park offers one of the largest expanses of undeveloped, open space in the community. Naturalized wooded areas, open space, and select native prairie grass areas are the primary attributes of this park. With the exception of a covered shelter and some road improvements, this park has been left mostly undeveloped. Well, you know, maybe a punk park would be better here. Maybe bow and arrow, I'd like to try that sometime. Maybe jazz concerts would bring some revenue in. Well, I digress. Quiet, fresh air, feeling the breeze in your face, a walk, listening to the birds, sitting on a log, and feel the quietness. What value is this to our community today? And what will it be to our community 50 years from now that no doubt will continue in its growth and development everywhere? I ask that we value this unique, relatively quiet, and wonderful green space. This would be progress in an atmosphere of reducing green space and sometimes almost uncontrolled growth. And I don't think this value can be reflected in a spreadsheet very well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I had to write my name down again.
Good evening, Mayor Dodson, members of the commission. My name's David DePaul, I live at 3006 Cherry Hill. I've been a resident of Manhattan for 25 years. Before I moved into Cherry Hill, I liked to walk the park. I'll echo what was heard before me, but I've noticed at least 37 species of birds there. I notice beautiful habitat for animals. I've been told, in this room, that the trees that will be knocked down and this new plan for the next nine holes for the disc golf are native and invasive species. But I'd ask, aren't we invasive? We're pretty much the most invasive species here. So it's habitat, and I would hate to see that go away. But my first major point is, I wanted to thank Alfonso for giving the presentation that he did, and I found it mostly factually correct and quite excellent. What I did not like was when he refers to the residents as though we aren't part of the community. We are. I've been, and I've walked around Warner Park before I lived close to it, and now I do. I was there yesterday, I was there the day before, I saw groups of children playing in there. It really is a used park, for many, many different reasons. But I also saw things that I didn't like in there. I didn't like the fact that trails are maintained. I didn't like the fact that the mulch sits in a pile four feet high and rots, as it has done the last two years that I'm aware of. So it isn't maintained well. When I walk in part of the Lower Meadow, I see structures, failed attempts to make something of this park that I do not believe that it was ever intended. There are shells of buildings, there are dangerous projections, concrete and iron rusting in that park that were left there from previous attempts to make that park better. Not only were they not cleared up, but I think at the time they were built, they're a hazard. I echo what Dr. Bandi said earlier, that Schultz Park may be a good option, and I'd like to see it fully explored to the degree that Warner Park has been. And I note in the summary statement that I believe you dealt with on August 5th, that said, "This is Rogers Schultz Park. The park is desirable for a championship-level golf course." And I think it should be resuraveled. But the main point that I wanted to make is that we've heard an impassioned plea for comments to be made on data and not opinion. So I'd like to give you some data, and it'll be a little bit redundant over what I spoke about last year, but I think it's of value to hear this. This is an article published in the Daily Breeze, which is a Hermosa Beach newspaper, from 2015. "Local Woman Blinded by Flying Golf Disc in Park Receives $3 Million" from Manhattan Beach. So I think, even if that $5 million in revenue isn't overinflated, somehow I feel sure it is, you may be paying that out in liability. So let's just listen to what happened. "A Hermosa Beach woman was blinded in one eye by an errant flying golf disc at Manhattan Beach's Polywog Park, settled a lawsuit for $3 million." The city finally quietly decided to close the disc golf course at the park, the city's busiest, indefinitely in 2014, followed by a closed-door city council meeting. But not before a six-year-old boy sustained life-threatening brain injury when a golf disc struck him as he played at the park in November. More than a year after Goodbody, the original person had suffered her injury. Curiously, according to the city's own municipal code, playing golf in parks was never legal anyway. The city has an ordinance, on the books, that bans the game of golf in any of its forms or implements. So here's a golf ball that weighs 47 grams. You don't have walkways across where you hit one of these balls. It's not allowed. The disc that we saw earlier weighs considerably more than this, sometimes up to 10 times, sometimes even with sharp edges. It can damage people, it can damage valued trees, and it's dangerous, and I agree that the 50-foot barrier is not enough. Interestingly, municipal officials had also already paid a lot of money in Manhattan Beach to survey their course too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Catherine Paul. I'm his wife, 3006 Cherry Hill. I just want to read from my sheet. It's a little bit easier for me, so I can wear my glasses. "Children and people leisurely taking a stroll can be hit at any given time with the disc. There are currently seven access points and entrances to get into Warner Park. The risk of being hit is certainly a big concern. I spoke with Assistant Park Director Carmen Houston. I have her number and her email of Swope Park in Kansas City just this morning. I discussed with her the park's location, told her everything I could about the park to remain neutral." Mrs. Houston's commented this. "Disc golf is a great sport, and we fully support it here in Kansas City. But our Kansas City Parks and Rec or city would never consider placing a disc golf course in a residential park neighborhood surrounded by homes." She comments and continues and says, "It is a very noisy sport, and there are liability issues to consider." She referred me to Mr. Jack Low. Mr. Jack Low partnered with the city of Kansas City, and he is the president of the Kansas City Flying Disc Golf, Inc. He spent a considerable amount of time with me on the phone. He agrees with Mrs. Houston's assessment. He states, "Disc golf is a fantastic sport, and I support it with all my heart. It is great in growing communities. Manhattan would be great, it would be great for Manhattan to receive a championship golf course. I have been playing since the 1990s, and I am a certified course designer since 2002. When designing a course, location matters, trees and up-and-down terrain matters, and there are many other factors to consider. I would like to see Manhattan build a beautiful disc golf course," he repeats. "I personally would not place a disc golf course where homes will be impacted. Furthermore, that is something all of us that play disc golf already know not to do. Potential destruction of property and noise are the big factors. Why did the course designer, Mr. Howk, whom he knows personally, design on the existing course knowing homes are within potential shot distances? I was never consulted by your Parks and Rec. I'm pretty popular in the sport. Without seeing Warner Park, I can tell you no disc golfer enjoys entering people's properties to pick up their disc. They'd rather not. Since I love Manhattan and my daughter attends KSU, I'm willing to help your Parks and Rec and provide a quick site overview. This will not be charged. This is not charged until we work out a plan. I have a positive partnership again with Kansas City. Your commissioners are welcome to check this, and I'd like to see this sport grow to keep people active all over the country. Please use my email and number to pass along to such folks." The other thing that I want to say is, Mr. Howk has been involved in just two that I've researched so far, in something called breach of contract with the cities that he has worked with. He is a great developer, no doubt. A lot of people love his courses. However, something about locking the baskets and removing them from the master plan that he develops is a concern, so we might want to check on that contract with Mr. Howk. Also, the concern comes from the city. None of the residents really understand how he was paid $5,000 or why he was paid $5,000 before a vote was rendered for Warner Park specifically. I believe he's due another $5,000. I think the contract so far states he is due $10,000 from our city. The other point that I would like to make is Warner Park has never been maintained properly. You've heard this over and over, so I'll try to keep it short. The city commission stated Warner Park needs to become more appealing to others. I just want to say that it was suggested by others to join the military trail, incorporate a garden and water and rocks, and look at the vision plan for Warner Park from Michaela Fitzgerald. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Marilyn Mock, I live at 3045 Geneva Drive, which is across Fort Riley Boulevard from Warner Park, but I do walk there often. My husband and I have moved around the country a lot before we came to Manhattan in 1992. And I'm an outdoors person, so I've done a lot of hiking in a lot of places. And one of the things that I was really impressed about when we came to Manhattan was how many parks there are. And there are parks in every neighborhood, and there are parks of every kind. And I was part of Manhattan Moms Club, and we took our kids and we went to all those parks. Warner Park is unique. Warner Park is unique in parks around the country and cities. It is very unique in Manhattan because it is natural. It is a place to take your kids where they can run in prairie grasses and hike through the woods, which is really important. Really important to have unorganized places in unorganized time for children to grow and explore and to use their imaginations. A couple of years ago, I was out walking in Warner Park on a trail, and I was unaware that the disc golf had been installed. And I was walking up through the woods, and I heard this sound that was so abrasive and foreign to listening to insects and birds and everything else. There was a clanking sound. So I went to see what it was, and it was this metal disc basket, which really destroyed the natural quietude and solitude of walking in the woods. The complaint about Fair Lawn having mosquitoes, well, I'll tell you, there are a whole lot of mosquitoes in those woods, and even out in the prairie area, so mosquitoes is a moot point. I think it's imperative to maintain Warner Park in its natural state, as close to nature as we can get it, so that people in this city can continue to have a quiet place to go and meditate and explore and touch the earth without the intrusion of the world outside. And it's not about the money. We have other parks, we can put money into other parks. Please keep Warner Park as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this one work?
Both of them are.
All right.
They'll be on, yes.
My name is Michael Walter. I live at Warner Park Area on 2921 Arbor Drive. My property does not border the park. I have observed for the last year or so, concerns both sides. I'd like to remain neutral. What I have seen, however, is an attempt to place a square peg in a round hole. Further, I have observed that one-third of the present Warner Park, speaking very generally, is already donated to disc golf. It would be nice for the round part of the peg to be preserved. I have a general suggestion, probably the most expensive, find, create another park for disc golf. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to use this mic because I'm tall and I don't have to bend over as far. My name is Debbie DiVannudo, I live in the northeast area of Manhattan. I do not live in Warner Park. I am one of only five individuals that have direct relations with Kent Kern Warner, who donated the park. I'm not up here to scream hysterics. I am here to present facts, which I have done in the past. And the fact is, that park was originally dedicated to be a natural park. It has been a natural park. I'd like to see it continue to be a natural park. Warner Park has been described by many as a hidden gem in Manhattan because of four main attributes. Number one, it's a prairie view from the top. You look at it, there's no place in Manhattan you can see all of Manhattan because of the hills. But Warner Park is one of the few that you can see over 70% of the city. Number two, the old military trail, there's a lot of history running through on that military trail. Number three is the ravine that runs through the park. It's cool, literally, cool. Not only for hiking and going and exploring, but with the shade and the natural habitat. Number four is the natural untapped areas. Nowhere else in these parks, City Park, there's no natural area. Northeast Park, there's no natural area. Seco Park, very little natural area that's accessible. Warner Park is so unique, we need to leave it to that way. There are several things that can be, that to me will be detrimental to that park with the expansion of the disc golf. Number one, while the new plans call for the courts to be away from houses, if you look at the map, the way they ring the ravine now, it isolates that ring and military trail. Somewhere you're going to have to cross over to get in unless you start at one end and hike all the way in. Number two, it increases exponentially the damage to the trees and plants around the course. It was already mentioned that to put some of that in, you're going to have to go in and cut out all the underbrush, like the honeysuckle and stuff. Well, with people going through, you're going to keep that bare. To me, that talks about what... To me, that talks about what happens with the watershed. You're already putting a big structure in across the highway. You already have flooding problems with Wildcrack Creek. We don't need to take any more green space away that feeds into Wildcrack Creek, and a lot of that is Warner Park. If you take away the natural underbrush, then the water's not going to have any place to settle, and it's going to shoot right down because there's not going to be plants there in the roots to do it. Even with the new plans, you have disc golf right next to either the road or the shelters. I personally don't want to go picnic in an area where I run the risk of having an errant disc come my way. I would like to see the road open. I do not want to see the road shortened. I know there were some problems with vandals back in the 70s. You're going to have vandals anywhere. I went to Northeast Park to walk the other day and noticed there was spray paint all over the Don Harvard Playground sign. Maybe we need to close that part down. You're going to have vandals are going to get in there. There are things you can do, yes, if you open up the road. Natural limestone blocks fit in perfectly with the natural look of the park. But if you're only putting the road in 50 feet, what about the other 100 feet? You can't get to it still. You know, the existing road that goes all the way into the park. I would also like to see the lower road opened up. If you eliminate or non-expand the disc golf, you can bring that in. You could have parking inside the park right next to an existing big shelter. I would also like to say, I think it's a very organized few people who are really screaming for this disc golf. I've looked on the web. The KSU Disc Golf Group has been inactive since May of 2017. The Goosegrass Organization hasn't posted anything since 2014. The Disc Fanatics of Kansas last posted in 2016. Little Apple Disc Club, if you go look on the web, they show one league, one league at Warner Park. 65 all-time members, only 44 are active. Are we expanding this so they can have more leagues? I have not heard leagues mentioned once. All I hear is tournaments. So let's talk about tournaments. Tournaments aren't guaranteed. And in Manhattan, when you have so much competition with softball, baseball, and basketball, you want to try and throw another tournament in there? You're also, I also talked with staff about the tournament, and they said, well, they don't get any money from that. So any damage to the park, any trash pickup, anything like that would be absorbed by the city. That's my tax dollars. I don't want my tax dollars paying for something that someone else is putting their money into. One last thing, there was a comment made about money talks. I want you to know, as not a representative of the city or anything, just talking with individuals, businesses, service organizations around the city, I have commitments of $36,843 that could be used for supplies, in-kind services, anything like that, for Warner Park to stay as it is, expanding the natural areas and eliminating the disc golf. I think you need to listen to your advisory board who said, do not expand disc golf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alessandra Stoyan. I live at 410 Warner Park Road. I've lived in Manhattan for four years. The first two years, we were renting an apartment. One of the first things I fell in love with in this area was walking in the Konza Prairie. We would go out there, probably my husband and I, every weekend to do that. I just want to share my perspective as a younger resident in the neighborhood. You know, for us, seeing our house and then walking down the street to that park was incredible. To see a place within city limits that looked a lot like the Konza Prairie in many ways, but you know, wasn't a drive outside of town, was incredible, and I think is echoing what some others have said, just what's really unique about Warner Park. That probably made the decision for us to join that neighborhood because we loved that park so much. I think, you know, what I, I don't know that I have a strong opinion in terms of disc golf. I've never played it. I'm friends with disc golfers. You know, it's, I can't comment on the sport itself for that park. But when I hear about making compromise, I think about the last meeting I went to regarding what the plans were for the master plan of the park. And we started with all of these kind of very large ideas for what to do with this park, and they were all to build things up, build bigger shelters, build a big tower that we would look out over the hills. At the time, I had written a letter that said, you know, I think that we should work with the existing strengths of the park. We already have hills that we can see from, right? Why do we need a big shelter? I sort of feel the same way now. And, you know, meeting in the middle or making compromises at this point, it's like we've eliminated all of these very built-up aspects of it, and now we're just debating the road and the disc golf course. You know, I feel like we're already sort of compromising the natural state of the park, right, with anything that we decide to put in there. So I just wanted to reiterate that I think, you know, progress is necessary, things need to change, but there is something about preservation, right, that we need to also preserve the natural character. And if we can do that within city limits as Manhattan continues to grow to the west to maintain that, I think that's a positive thing. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Spencer Reschick, 1575 Jefferson Ridge, right next to the stadium. I am currently the president of the K-State College Disc Golf Team. We have over 50 members in our group meal already, and that was done starting last February, and that was all within three weeks of starting the club. And within 10 days of starting the club, we had enough people get together in meetings. We presented to the Student Governing Association at K-State and managed to get $2,000 of funding from the school because we had that much support. We will be playing tournaments. There is a tournament in Wichita, October 12th, and a tournament in Columbia, Missouri, October 26th, as well as plenty of others across the country. A championship-level course, for those of you who haven't played, there is a very big difference between just a park course and a championship-level courses. And all those championship-level courses will be the type of courses we would play in college competition. So if Warner Park was to be expanded, we would utilize it to practice on a more difficult course. And I've also talked to the officers about this meeting. We are more than willing, if trash or anything at the disc golf course is a problem, we are more than willing as a club to go out there and pick up any trash that is left on the disc golf course and make sure it's perfectly clean and do the best of our abilities to maintain the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and start if you want.
All right.
While he's signing in.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Eli Smith. I live at 1615 Dennison Avenue, and I am on the K-State Collegiate Disc Golf Club, or on the team. And so on Spencer's behalf, like, we were talking about the trash cleanup. I've already started thinking about like a tournament based setting, so it creates a competitive incentive to pick up trash at Warner Park. So like, the team that gets the most, picks up the most trash, gets cash payout for however much. And I feel like with enough people that, and I really do think that enough people would actually show up at this tournament to clean it up, at least around the course area. So our litter, not perhaps the trail, but our litter from the local disc golf area course would be cleaned up. And then also, I'm also on the league committee. So we would actually be looking at a disc golf, like, league. We're already talking about bag tag, which is you show up, you play a competitive round and like first through 10th, get tags, and so on and so forth. And Warner Park would be put in the rotation since it is, if this proposal did go through, it would be a championship-level course. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli.
Hello. My name is Grant Wisdom. I'm a resident at 2309 Brockman Street, and this is my first time attending one of these And I am seeing a lot of hysteria here. Noisy is being thrown around. It's golf. If you've seen it on TV, it's not too noisy to me. It seems pretty quiet, actually. There's already a nine-hole course at Warner Park. So I want to see the grievances prior to these meetings from the residents surrounding the park. Were there ever any grievances ever brought to the commission? If so, it's kind of strange on the timing. Disc golf courses are the least impactful on any vegetation ground compared to any other sport. I mean, we're talking about putting in a removable basket, just nine more, and maybe even putting in some concrete tee pads, which I've seen some tee pads put down with just mulch, which would be the most least impactful impact on the environment. I have a five-year-old son who I'm actually missing a parent-teacher orientation night because I felt that it was more important for me to be here to kind of show, or it was more important for me to be here based on his future in sports. He is interested in playing, which speaks volumes to me. He has cerebral palsy, and most sports are going to be off limits to him, but not disc It would be very sad to me if this didn't get passed just because people are wanting to preserve the extensions of their backyards. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
How's it going? I'm Alan Fox, currently at 2303 Tuttle Circle. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. So they have the golf ball, it's 47 grams. He said 10 times the amount. The heaviest disc that you can currently use, PDGA, is 180 grams, which would actually only be four times heavier than a golf ball. There's no metal edges on anything like that. Also, with the goose grass and the D-Fock, I used to have goose grass, D-Fock and goose grass actually combined. We have Little Apple Disc Golf Club, which we do use disc golf scene, but most of our stuff is on Facebook, which we have the Manhattan KS Disc Golf. We have 467 members, and we had 82 members in the Little Apple Disc Golf Club for the bag tags, which we alternate between University Park, Fancy Creek, Family Tuttle, which I designed for kids, for families to go out and actually learn the sport, figure out how to do it. Tuttle Creek, Warner, Fairmont, I feel like I'm repeating myself. But University Park was also one that I designed. That is an 18-hole course. It is community-owned, community-maintained, so it's on Riley County property, I do believe, but it is maintained by the community, which we cut down everything that we had to do to make fairways. We designed everything. We poured the concrete. We installed the baskets. We did everything out there except for mow. So there's a lot of stuff that we do do to help courses. We go out, pick up the trash, we put the trash cans in. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Ethan Chaunce. Thank you for letting us speak today about this issue. I've disc golfed my whole life, literally since I could walk. I've designed a course in Jetmore, Kansas. There is a few points that were brought up tonight that I wanted to just clarify on, one of them being the 50-foot barrier on the north side of the property. My course in Jetmore, we have no trees because that is southwest Kansas, so there's no vegetation to prevent any discs from flying into people's backyards. That course borders about 25 to 30 campgrounds that are usually full throughout the year. We run tournaments with campers just lining the fairways. We've never had an issue. As many of these disc golfers behind me will tell you, I can throw 500 feet, and with that vegetation on that north side of the property, I could throw the disc as hard as I can, and I don't think I would actually make it through all the way to someone's backyard. As Spencer mentioned, we are restarting the KSU Disc Golf Club. Part of the reason I chose to attend K-State was when I heard that the Warner redesign was going to happen. I had played Warner before, and it was awesome. And then I heard that John Houck was going to be redesigning the course into something a little more challenging, which really piqued my interest. Spencer mentioned we'd be willing to throw any resources we have to towards course maintenance or even as far as the event side of things goes, we would be able to take control of all of that. Last thing, the incident at Poliwog Park was mentioned. I can't pull up pictures, but I can assure you that that course was not designed by someone professional like John Houck. If you pull up pictures, you can look it up online. They still have pictures up, even though the course was removed. It crosses sidewalks, playgrounds, an amphitheater, parking lots, roads, et cetera. It was designed without safety in mind, which is, as John Houck and his wife will tell you, that is the number-one thing on their list. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Kunicki. I live at 311 Cherry Hill. I think you guys have heard some really good points tonight. I just want to hone in on a few. I feel like a lot of the disc golfers have missed the point. The point of our neighborhood isn't that we are against disc golf. We have said that in every meeting that we've been at, we are not against disc golf. Why? We just wanted you to look at a different area like Schultz Park, at an objective, take an objective look at it rather than a subjective look. I just feel like they decided they wanted it at Warner Park, and there was not, there was just going to be bias from there on, just how can we get it into Warner Park? Schultz Park has, as it's been said, has, shows so many great opportunities that all of us neighbors are concerned about. Schultz Park will take care of that. And I feel like this is kind of like a Field of Dreams kind of movie. If you build it, they will come. I think they probably thought the same thing with soccer and the baseball turf fields as well. And I spend almost every weekend going to Kansas City for my boys to play soccer because we can't get anybody to come here. And I would love, I'm sad about that because I would love to support our community. So I think that's kind of a mute point that you can't guarantee that that's going to bring in more. Something that nobody, that not very many people have mentioned is, is what about all the wildlife that's there? Where is it going to go once we do expand the disc golf? There are a lot of deers, fox. I mean, we just see so much. So I would like to, nobody's really brought that up. And also with the Mrs., the Warner family member had said, you know, what if we do take out more of those trees? What does that mean to Wildcat Creek? I do think that that is a point that should be looked at with the flooding. I do think the matrix is very, very biased and very subjective and not objective, so I'm very disappointed and not surprised that Warner Park came up on top. Finally, we bought, well, we have four young kids. We bought our house in the hopes that we would be able to enjoy Warner Park and enjoy our backyard safely. It's been that way for forever, and everybody says not in my backyard, but I think I, as a mom, I have to stand up here and say that I am concerned about the safety of my children. I would not be a good mom if I didn't stand here and say, I'm very concerned. Right now, they can go out and play. They don't have to listen to the potential bad words that might be back there. So I would really, as a mom, I encourage you to think about Schultz Park where the homes are much farther away. And once again, your Parks Board voted unanimously. And once again, your Parks Board voted unanimously against disc golf in Warner, so I would like for you to honor what they thought too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Reed Scott. I live at 406 Warner Park Road. I've lived there over 20 years. It's my third house in the Arbor Heights area, because I wanted to be closer to the park. I thoroughly enjoy the park. I was a Parks major in college. I was on the Parks Board for seven years. I follow everything Parks. I'm not against disc golf by any means. I'm against it in Warner Park. As continually has been brought up, Warner Park is a unique area. We already have currently, if I'm tracking, three very local courses and one a little bit out of town. That I understand one of them's not a championship course. It's going to bring in all the people, which leads me to my next point. A gentleman earlier said he wants to recoup some of the money from Country Stampede. I don't have all the facts and figures, but I do know the largest single-day attendance at Country Stampede was 55,000 people in 2012. So on one hand, it's not an intrusive sport. Wildlife isn't going to be affected. Pick up trash, that's great. However, if you're talking about that many people coming in, I don't know where all... They're all going to park. That's great that they can stay at a hotel. Again, not against it. Don't know where they're going to park. Don't know where they're going to walk from. I can tell you from living on Warner Park Road when they have cross-country, even with the parking in the park. And we're not talking about anywhere near the number of people we're talking about for a championship world-class course. People are walking from all the way up Miller Parkway, all the way through the neighborhood. And that's fine. But if you're going to 10 times that, I'm not sure where they're going to park or where they're coming from. Kind of lastly, as far as access into the park, I would say, I'd echo what some people have said earlier. What good is there in the park? What's going to happen good by allowing vehicular traffic in there? Right now, when I just left right before coming here, no kidding, there's a family playing up kind of in the road next to it. It was also just mowed today, or haved, or whatever it was. With traffic, that's going to be a concern. Right now, people walk. They walk with kids, strollers, and that sort of thing. I would be interested, and I don't expect an answer, but to know, is that going to be 24-hour vehicular access if it opened? Or is it going to be a dawn-to-dusk park? If it's dawn-to-dusk, then I assume it's going to be patrolled, and someone could stand to be ticketed if they're in there after hours. Aside from stargazing or perhaps walking at night, I'm not sure what the reason would be to allow the access 24 hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Mitchell Brenn. I live at 2300 Spain Drive. I don't live in the Warner Park area. You know, I thought about, like, the many times I've come here in the last nine years, which I can't believe I'm coming here for a third of my life, no offense. I'm sure you guys are great people, but I don't want to be here that many times. I thought about coming up here and trying to just... The same thing that's happened. I know some of you, I've seen some of you for a long time, some of you are new to me. Same thing with the Parks and Rec Board. There's been many iterations of that board in every year that this comes up, or every so often, maybe not every year, but every so often this comes up, this idea of expanding disc golf. You know, we're... And I don't mean this in a negative way, but we're met with this. We're met with people that basically say, you know, "We don't want disc golf." You know, there's always a reason. I respect the reasons. Basically, I wanted to just talk on a few things. One is, you know, we talk about safety. And, you know, we had a professional who went through, and he, you know, designed the courses. You know, he's insured. He talked, you know, he designed it with the idea of safety. And, but apparently, that's not enough. You know, we talk about getting hit with a disc, yet we hear Alfonso say, you know, "There's ever been a recorded incident here ever about someone getting hurt by a disc." There's a lot of fear going in. I will, for me, I love nature. I'm an avid disc golfer. I play multiple times a week. I have played tournaments. I'll be honest, I could really care less if tournaments come because of this course. I really care... I don't really care if it brings a ton of money and all that. That's not my point. You know, I've gone through a couple of hard times and had a hard upbringing. And disc golf, when I found it, is just this great chance to be in nature. It really brought me out to it. I would have never seen Warner. I would have probably never... I probably wouldn't even be here anymore, to be honest, if it wasn't for disc golf in this community. There's some great people here that have kept it amazing for me. There's a lot of fear, and I understand that. I do... One point that I want to make sure that I touch on, because I don't want to reiterate what everybody has said, is I went through, and I was a part of the process for Schultz Park. I went to all those meetings, just like I'm coming here to these. We were met with the same exact... The same points. All of, everything that's being said, the same points. When they did this study, you know, we're not like evil people, like pressuring them to put Warner as number one. We were very ready for this to be, say that Warner was not the best. And we were going to be sad, but we were going to be ready. We actually went to Schultz because we were told that, you know, Warner is maybe not the best option, maybe we should do a master plan. We're the ones who got the master plan started because of this. We... I digress with that point. All I want to say is, please consider the fact that, like, you know, disc golf is not disruptive to nature. It does have clang and chains. But it's not a baseball field. It's not football. It's not... It's nothing like that. Please, please give us an 18-hole course in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, I missed all the, like, the early part. So what's the... I have to name and address, right?
Correct.
So Adam Johnson, 2508 Brockman Street, here in Manhattan. Yeah, I know you're good, Mitch. Sorry, I just got out of scouts. I'm actually kind of thankful that you guys had enough public comment, that here I am, two hours late, able to speak still. I guess small blessings. I could probably spend a whole lot of time with probably arguments that you guys have already heard, for and against it. And it's the same stuff every time we're here. For me, what this comes down to is just, because I mean, honestly, all the concerns that are about disc golf, if we had a really... I mean, disc golfers can respond to those. I mean, we can talk about professional planning and how important that is for safety. We've obviously attended all these meetings, and we're still here, right? Trying to figure out how we can, you know, have a course, right? We've... We're looking at other options. For me, what this really just comes down to is once, like, we want it, and, you know, and they want... They don't want it. I mean, that's what I think it comes down to. This is totally feasible. This doesn't, for me, come down to safety issues, or doesn't come down to whether disc golf is an appropriate thing for this park. Disc golf fits this park. Disc golf belongs in this park. If it belongs anywhere in this city, and if we're making the argument that involves in Schultz Park, it definitely belongs in Warner Park then. I mean, we're talking about very similar parks, all right? Schultz has its own problems for disc golf because of the very steep elevation that would make it really difficult to navigate, like, actually develop a course in there, because there's a lot of usable spaces. But to get there and use all that would be really a struggle. The VMI tract is a... Would be a cool opportunity, because there's nothing there. But it's also super flat and not a lot of trees. Like, we're really not that interested in the space that's there, even when it gets developed in whatever 10-plus years. Warner Park is our opportunity, and that's why we're here, and that's why we really want it. And that's what this comes down to, is that's why everyone's here. That's why all... I mean, that's what we want, that's what they want. And I guess, you know, for me, I just really hope that we can have some decision tonight, some clarity about moving forward. I think that's what everybody wants in this room. I think there's a level of exhaustion that we all feel from trying to juggle our lives and try to make these meetings. And I was hearing about, from the other meeting, about vacations and things, and frustration about not being able to be here. I was frustrated, because I had kids' things and this. So anyways, I hope that we can, you know, have some response tonight about how we are going to move forward. You know, as elected officials, that's kind of what we come here for, right? And that's what we really want from you guys today, is to have some real guidance here on what to move... On what we're doing, moving forward, so we can stop having the same circular conversations. So I appreciate you listening to everybody, if for no other reason, because it gave me the opportunity to say I love disc golf, and I really want it to be in the city limits of Manhattan, and I really want it to be in Warner Park. I think it's a beautiful marriage for disc golf, you know, and that park. It's where it should be. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Did you sign in?
I did not.
Hello, my name's Hannah Brenn, 2300 Spain Drive. My husband spoke previously before Adam. I am not an avid disc golfer, but my husband is not so good at it, but I'm learning. And I just have two comments. Comment and a question. Comment, I keep thinking, as I've been to these meetings a few times now, is sharing is caring, if we go back to grade school. But I also am just curious, because we're expanding the course that's already there. There's already nine holes at Warner Park. And I know, I don't know what the impact has been with those nine holes and how long that course has been here, but I don't know that doubling that will cause that much more impact. And I've seen the master plans dwindle down from what was previously proposed with the playgrounds and all that. And the one thing that has maintained in there is the disc golf course. And I feel if there's already a nine-hole course there, why not double it and share the park as a whole community? Thank you.
Thank you. Can you come on up?
Hi, my name is Marcy Harris, and I live on Hickory Court. So my backyard and my back porch look down onto the disc golf place, and I can see one of the cement pads right below us. My husband and I used to walk down our little path and walk the park. And then we head into the military road and all the other paths there. Since the golf course has been there, we no longer are able to walk that path, because the kids are there, and things are being thrown around. And it's just not the wonderful place to park, I mean, to walk anymore. And we have to go all the way around to get there. So I just wanted to say that it does disrupt if you extend the park. That's even less area that we wanderers can wander safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shilovick, and I live at 400 Warner Park Road. I live right next to the park. My neighbor across from me is Tom Velkanskas. He also lives right next to the park. I've lived there for 15 years, actually a little over. And I've been able to see many changes in the city limits, not being a Kansan. I've appreciated being a part of not only this town and the state, but, you know, that whole community of Arbor Heights. And there's some lovely people. But I think one of my favorite things ever about living and why we stayed as a military family was that it's such a unique place, Warner Park is. To have something just all natural in the city limits is very rare. And I do appreciate the fact that so many want to be outside, and they want to experience the same beauty that we do when we're walking trails and that type thing. But they want to throw disc golfs around, or discs around, excuse me. I can totally appreciate that. But to think that it's not going to interfere with, you know, existing trees and people who walk in the park and in nature and the animals, I mean, it's just kind of... I think they're diminishing the fact that the animals themselves, you know, are affected greatly. Those, that underbrush that was that, I guess it was Alfonso who talked about clearing. I understand there's very invasive plants and shrubs that they have to go in and maintain for the good of all, the ecosystem there in the area. But at the same time, those are also little dens where I've seen fox. I've seen coyotes, of course, little rabbits and raccoons. I've seen so many different types of animals that use those little clustered areas of trees and plants as their homes. And they also use them as little hiding places from people. So to think that those animals would not be impacted is just... You're very mis... Someone's misinformed, or they're, you know, they're presenting their side, and they're only thinking about themselves and their enjoyment. And I can appreciate the recreational aspect. I really, really can. But I do know for a fact, just living there day to day, how much could be affected by tearing out such a large portion and getting into those trees, getting into those thickets, and clearing all that out. You're going to take a lot of homes away from the wildlife. And that will be, you know, in 50 years. People have used that phrase a lot tonight. You know, remains to be seen what will happen. But I just... My guess is it's going to be something that our great-grandkids won't be able to enjoy in the same way that we do today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Pat Younghens. My husband and I live at 3001 Cherry Hill Road. We've been there close to 30 years. We appreciate all the time and the presentation that's been presented this evening with all the facts. The disc golf seems like an amazing sport for those that enjoy it. Warner Park seems like an amazing park for those that enjoy it. But besides all that, the one thing that I think about is our property is one of the properties that is adjacent to the north side here that has been outlined. I've walked the park many times alone, with animals, with family. And the lower ravine area that this design is located at, you can walk in that area and turn and not think there's a soul around, and then all of a sudden, you see a group of people walking. My concern is, as a mother, if you're walking and you have children that are with you, if there's a tournament going on, will they not be curious? Will they not want to see what's going on? And how do they know where the safety zone is? Where do you need to be so you're not hit or injured? Or if it's not a tournament, and there's just individuals that are down there practicing, it's a quiet sport, as far as them walking and throwing the disc, other than when they, I guess, hit the basket, and there's a noise from the clang from the chains. But my concern is, how can we guarantee, as close as we are to a neighborhood, with all the interest of everybody that enjoys walking, or biking, or picnicking, or whatever, how can we ensure that there is going to be some kind of safety measure, so people are not injured? But I do appreciate all the effort that's been given, and I think there are other options available that would be safer for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no body movement, I'm going to close the public comment period. And we'll come back to the commission. Before we get started, I think that this has been going on so long... going on so long and, I mean, obviously, we have to all agree on this, but probably the thing we need to decide is whether there's going to be another disc golf course in Warner Park or not. And then provide sufficient guidance on what we think about where a disc golf, another disc golf course might be, or any further questions and research we'd like them to do. Otherwise, you know, if we, if we kind of don't have those kinds of answers, we're going to have to come back and have a session where we vote in order to give clear guidance, I think. So with that, just come back to the commission for questions and...
Oh, well, if you really want to go, you can go. You, when you run for office, no one tells you about disc golf. So first and foremost, thank you all for being here and participating. Before I get started on kind of what the mayor was pointing out in terms of giving a direction, there's, there's two things that I want to address that have come up repeatedly in this conversation, not only tonight, but since I've been participating for the last six months that I think are really disappointing. And I go out of my way anytime I catch these things. First and foremost, it came up a couple of times tonight and I get a lot of emails where the insinuation in the emails is because I pay property taxes or because I am a homeowner, they don't say it, but what they're insinuating is my voice is more important, that I pay property taxes in this community. And I just want to say that I don't own a home here. And I think it would be a pretty hard argument to say I don't invest as much in Manhattan as you do. And a lot of people like me help fill up city coffers. So I don't care if you've lived here for one year, if you're a military family or you're a student, or if you've lived here for 10 years. If you're living in this community, your voice means the same to me. So thank you for participating in this, but please don't use that as a line of argument because I think it's just degrading to the 60% of our community that lives here that does, that rents and is part of the transient community. Second thing that really disappointed me is there has been like this underlying narrative that there's some sort of corruption happening here from city staff. I can assure you that the disc golf community is not a strong lobby. If they were, they wouldn't be waiting on, this is probably year four or five that the disc golf group, if 10, that they have been repeatedly asking for this. I know when I stepped onto the commission, one of Karen McCullough's closing comments was about the fact that we have been unable to produce anything for the disc golfers. One of the things that I think city staff has tried to do was lay out clear and decisive kind of actions and make this as public of a process as possible. So again, Mr. Bandy, your assessment was provided to us in our mail folder. It was in our packet, just as the disc golf part was as well. Everybody here had an opportunity to reach out to us and speak to us, and we heard what you had to say. There was no corruption here. We just have to make a decision. Okay, going into my actual, what I think. So first, when we first, when we last visited, one of the things that I asked staffed was for side-by-side comparisons of other parks because at that point I felt like we hadn't received enough information if there were other options. And so I appreciate what you did here in laying out a matrix that it was a little bit more decisive than what we had been previously provided. Because I don't, it doesn't matter what park we choose on that list, the disc golfers are 100% right. We could do this with Roger Schultz and we'll have the Roger Schultz neighborhood in here asking the same exact questions. So what I asked is what is the best area for disc golf? What's the most playable park for disc golf? And I think that we found that here with Warner Park. The only thing that pulled me back on that a little bit was the survey results. But once I looked a little bit more at the survey results and some of the, not looked at the weighted averages, but looked at who placed, how many votes were on the highest priority items. If we did that, disc golf was number eight. And another kind of interesting thing was paved walking paths were number three. But we definitely haven't talked anything about paved walking paths. That was pulled out quite rapidly. So I don't put as much weight on the weighted survey results because there were a lot of people who supported disc golf. There were just a lot of people against it. Same with the dog park. So survey results don't play into this decision as much as maybe some of the public comments I've heard here tonight. Second, something else that's come up a lot was safety. I, the two parks I visit the most, I live in the Northview neighborhood, are the Fairmont Park and the Outlet Park at Total Creek. Both of them have adjacent disc golf courses, particularly at the Outlet Park. I run right around that road that circles around there because it's almost exactly a mile. And I'm really bad at keeping the app on my phone on. So it's really easy for me to track. There are people literally throwing disc goffs probably not even five feet away, parallel to where you run, as well as there is picnic areas and shelter areas that people are always at. And I have never seen a problem happen. Kind of similar situation with Fairmont. The houses are very exposed where the disc golf area is at Fairmont. There are playgrounds and parks where there's football practice, never been an issue. I think that obviously safety still needs to be a concern, right? We still need a professional designer to come in. And I would hope that if a disc golf expansion gets approved tonight, the future commission that actually votes to fund it, they would hear from the contractor and hear bore about how we can ensure safety. But the 50-foot buffer, especially since we don't have the disc golf set up, so they're throwing at the buffer, they're parallel throwing to the buffer. And so I think in concept B, safety has been addressed there. I think that buffer is sufficient, at least to start exploring the concept further. The next thing was related to nature. I guess this is a little bit in the eyes of the beholder. So I can't really argue with anybody here that doesn't, that disagrees that disc golf impedes on the nature. I don't think that it does. I, we started with a master plan that was much more built up, the dog park, the playground, and we pulled a lot of that back. And I largely actually agree with a lot of those decisions. I did feel like it built out Warner Park a little bit more than it needed to be, but I disagree that disc golf pushes that over the edge. The only hesitation that I would have on that, and again, I likely won't be a part of the commission that votes on funding for this, but the vegetation, the removal of vegetation concerns me somewhat. So if I were on the commission to approve that, I would want to know a lot more about that. If we started, the designer came in and said, actually, we're going to have to remove this whole set of trees that are non-invasive, I would have large problems with that. So again, I probably won't be on the commission that looks at that, but that's something that I would have concern. One other point that I forgot to make about safety really quick is, again, while safety should be concerned, I just looked up some quick statistics. There are 200,000 children every year that are taken to the emergency room because of public playground injuries. But there is not a massive movement to get rid of public playgrounds, right? Like every second we breathe is inherently a risk. We have to be responsible about how we facilitate and manage those risks. But I don't think there's overwhelming evidence here that says disc golf is going to impede that. So I support concept B for the disc golf expansion, or at least I would want to hear more information about concept B. The only change that I would have to it is my only concern about the road was I always thought that the road should make it to the shelter. Because to me, if the road doesn't make it to the shelter, there's really not a point in having a road. If I'm someone that has a disability and I just want to be a shelter in nature, concept B's road doesn't really help me. It puts me next to the restroom and that's probably not a fun place to have a picnic. So I would like the road to extend out to that existing shelter. For, I would encourage and I would, I would advocate for, if we could leave that barrier and just make this a dawn till dusk park and then shut that barrier not to allow traffic in after dusk, I think that would maybe take away some of the concerns the neighbors have. But I, I mean, there are ways that we can regulate that. The 70s, that area was a very different place than it was today. The surrounding neighborhoods are a very different place than they were today. Take your dog out to the Kanza Trail and you'll be shamed the next day on social media because they'll take a picture of you. Like there are ways that we can manage that area and prevent those things from happening. So supportive of concept B, other than I would want the road to go to shelter A, I mean, existing, the first existing shelter. But otherwise, I think what we have here is a good compromise between a lot of different parties. That leaves, in my opinion, Warner Park in a fairly natural state, but improves access to disc golf, which the disc golfers have been asking for, for some time, and we have yet to deliver.
Okay, I'll just focus on what the mayor said, you know, should we have disc golf there or not? I went back and looked at the November 27th, five-hour meeting this afternoon to, to see what we had said. And I think the problem was exactly that. At that meeting, you didn't get any definitive guidance on what to do, except from me, because I basically said that I support the Parks and Rec Plan, which their vision was no 18-hole disc golf. And I was all for seeing a matrix and where else to put it. But in my mind, the decision was made November 27th of last year, that there wasn't going to be 18 holes in Warner Park. And that's where I'm still at today. You know, no 18 holes there, keep the nine, exactly what the Parks and Rec Board recommended.
Some things are, I'm torn because I can see the rationale on both sides. So I may roam around a bit with my explanation, but I am disappointed that we are not following the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Board. I think our commission pays a lot of attention to the boards that make recommendations to us. And the fact that they would, did not endorse this, the disc golf for Warner Park, in my, for me, is significant. And I'm, I think I've read that there's going to be 100 parking places at Schultz Park. I don't want to see 100 places at Warner.
No, there wouldn't be 100 spots at Schultz Park.
Okay.
No, that wouldn't be the case.
How many are you planning?
I'd have to look at the plan, but 60, I think, is what.
60? I just know that I don't want to see the Warner Park area where people park on the grass occasionally, committed to pavement. And so that would be a shame in a natural park area. I do want an 18-hole disc golf course in this, another one in this community. And I've said that for the last four years. When I first came on the commission, as you said, the commission had been talking about that. And I remember Karen McCullough was committed and was impatient that we couldn't get one. Because I think it's a, a good thing. It does not, we don't have to pay a million or $2, $2 million for turf. We don't have, we don't have the significant infrastructure costs of putting up baskets anchored in concrete. And to me, that should be a fairly, one of the cheapest things we can do with, and finding the right place, of course, which is what we're talking about tonight. But I'm not married to Warner Park. And I think I said that the last time, a year ago. I am, I asked, I was, one of my primary asks was to find another place besides this. And I don't want it crowded in here. I don't like the fact that, that this professional level plan goes that close to the neighborhood on the north. If you wanted to pick a fight with a neighborhood, you would not move it that close to that northern boundary, as far as I'm concerned. And I would have hoped we would have not done that. The matrix of putting in the current uses just kind of twists the, the rankings, as far as I'm concerned. So I, the, the three areas that are, I don't have it up here, but current or existing parking, and I don't care where the, I mean, it's not, if we're going to redo a park in any way, we're not going to worry about what's existing or current. We're going to make, have, proceed with a, a purpose. I, I don't feel like I have closure on my question about the conservation easement and whether that could be used at Schultz Park. Let's see. Well, I think, I think that's enough. I'm, I'm not, I'm not committed to Warner Park. I want a disc, an 18-hole disc course golf, disc course. As far as I'm concerned, we could have 18 holes somewhere else and walk away and leave the nine holes we have currently at Warner Park and ha, have it be more of a neighborhood thing because there don't want to be nine holes. So.
So I have a few questions. First of all, thank you for everybody for coming again to one of our meetings and staying so long. I think this is how democracy works. And hopefully, we're not going to make anybody happy because there's passionate people on both sides. So we'll try to figure this out. Excuse me. I wanted to know, there was talk about Fairmont Park and how it's always, people haven't been able to play on it for a while because of flooding or water and mosquitoes. So how often do people play at Fairmont? Or has it, how, how viable is that as a disc golf course?
Well, the issue isn't necessarily the flooding. I'm sure if we got something similar to 93, this would flood, that, that is why most of that is Riley County property. Because in 93, a lot of that was flooded. It was taken out, turned into a park. In regards to the city-owned property, that's the 40 acres right up against the river. The current Fairmont disc golf course, I've heard comments from players is that in those warmer months, there is quite a bit of mosquitoes. It does make it a little bit challenging to play. So if we looked at possibly implementing an 18-hole disc golf course on the, on the, on the city side, which is right up against the, the river, we're going to have the same issues with the mosquitoes. Not only that, but also the flooding that occurs on the Kansas River. Just because this trail here, as I had mentioned before, is levee, does protect, slightly protect this area, but it will get affected by the flooding that occurs on, on the Kansas.
And about the Total Creek State Park, that also has 18 holes, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So is that used pretty frequently as for disc golf without, I don't know about the mosquitoes there?
Yeah, from what I've heard from the, the players, it's in their rotation that they use. They had mentioned five when I'd met with them before, and it was within that rotation. Something a little bit additional, when I did talk to the park superintendent there, I asked if they had enough room to expand to 36. It'd be something close enough, but they just don't have the, the capacity to, to extend it to 36 holes out there.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is every time you talk about a championship golf, disc golf course is what I'm hearing, is they want it to be championship level. And to have it at that level in Manhattan, we need to have three of them, 18 holes?
So the championship level course designation is, it looks at your acreage. So what was seen in, per PGDA guidelines is anything from 30 to 40 acres. A lot of times, it's more than 40 acres, but that's usually your minimum. So moving from there, championship level course then looks at, at installing different tees. So different areas. There'd be like a red, a blue, and a gold. And that's, that's the distance that one throws the disc to the basket. And so with that additional, that, that, there's variation in the play. And so that would be a championship level course. In discussions with John Hauck, when we were talking about the amount of tees, we weren't, we, we didn't want to see that many tees. We did want to have maybe a, a, a second temporary tee to go off of, but we didn't want to, to put that much concrete out there. So we did limit that, that amount of distance. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, I was trying to get my screen to come to where I was trying to find, we had a little description for each of the golf, for the, all of the disc golf areas. And ultimately, the decision was it wasn't suitable for a championship disc golf course. Although there may have just been one or two factors that disqualified it, which I wouldn't think were a big deal, but apparently they are from the recommendations. They are thinking about my championship level.
And there's been comments even from the disc golf players that it, not necessarily, you know, saying championship level course, that's, that's a, a marketing tool that I'm sure the designer put onto it. But it also talks about the amount of tournament that's played. I know I've heard comments, anecdotal comments from the players saying, you know, I don't care if it's called championship level, you know, it, is it, is it a, is it a design by someone who has a name in the industry? Yes. Okay, then I'm fine with not having that designation. So it's a possibility that you, we don't need to have that many tees. We don't need to have that designation.
Yeah, I think, I think what I was trying to see is what do we want in a disc golf course? And I, I ultimately, I think the Warner Park area is great for the nine holes that we have right now. I am concerned about making it 18, but I do want to have something else. And although there have been times throughout my time on, on the city commission where we went back on plans, the Peace Memorial Auditorium is an example, the Roundabout is an example. I'm not saying we should go back and redo everything with Schultz Park and come up with that because that was a, a bigger extension of it. But at the with that, because that was a bigger extension of it, but at the same time, I want to see this in a different spot, in a different place. I think one of the things we have is, Manhattan being the community, is we have people that have gotten established to a quality of life with having a beautiful park behind, right behind in their residence, and at the same time, we have a generation of people coming for new types of activities. Pickleball being one of them, that didn't exist before, disc golf being one of them. More and more people, there's a decrease in regular golf with the golf ball, because it's just more expensive and it's not so, it's more cumbersome for families these days, and disc golf seems to be more inclusive for families and to be outdoors, enjoying it in a relatively nat- natural environment, as opposed to regular golf. We've had conversations before with developments going into other areas where we would lose wildlife, or we would, animals would be displaced, habitats would be reconfigured. That's one of my concerns, but the bigger concern for me here is, it looks to me still like we have options, and I don't want to say, you know, "Let's go back to the drawing board and find a different option for this one," but if we're not going to do it at Warner Park and have it there, I'm okay with not having a 18-hole disc golf right now in this area. I think if we're looking for tournament-level sports, I want to see what that looks like, but I'm not sure that this is the time for that right now.
Okay.
And I'm okay with the vehicular traffic that we've discussed, the roads that are going to go through the park. I think the owner from the descendants here said that was okay with her, and I think that was the qualifier we were looking for. But, right now, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on this one.
Okay. Commissioner Morris, you, we talked more, a little bit about disc golf in your comments. Any thoughts on the extension of the road that was proposed in those?
I would not like to see the, the park open 24 hours. I don't want to incre, if we have this wonderful natural park, I don't want to see it paved over, gravelled over, to a, a big chunk of it at all. And right now, there's a, it's a small footprint, and people park on the grass occasionally. So, so when you talk about parking or the road, and I wouldn't have a problem with people parking on the road, I'm just, I, you know, it is, Jared has a point about how do you get to the shelter? Maybe the shelter needs to be in a more accessible location, because the one that's there is not very pretty.
And that's something we brought up throughout the master plan process.
It's kind of shabby-looking.
Yeah, it was bringing up, you know, some of those amenities at the entrance, but I was very much opposed to anyone over on this side because of that, interrupting that natural aesthetic, and so, that's why we, we didn't propose anything over on this west side because of that, what we heard, and so, enhancing that shelter, potentially putting in a, a new restroom is it...
Right now, it doesn't have a restroom.
Correct.
And I would support one on the northeast corner. I'm not su, I mean, I just think there has to be a restroom, or we're, there's a real reality here, and as large as the park is, and as many people as it serves, there needs to be that facility. And, I don't know about the dog park. I mean, it depends on how busy this park is, whether we make room for a dog, dog park.
Yeah, no, I...
So, I'm not committed to that either.
No, I think we're, we've moved on from the dog park, but I just wanted to get your direction on, on the, on the road.
I just, I don't, I'm just, I want to be careful with how, in City Park, I am opposed to paving City Park anymore, and I have been, the last two pavements you've done, and so, I, I want us, I, I don't want us paving a lot of, of the park.
No, this, we, we would not, we would not do any kind of paving right now, it is a gravel road. We don't look to do any major modifications to that route. The only modification would be where it would end. Currently, right now, it ends all the way out the north side.
Where the gravel road would end?
There is, currently, there's a gravel road there.
I know, but we're talking about a gravel road, not, I don't know. It depends on how we organize the park, whether we put a gravel road all the way through it and then up to the north boundary. I'm, I, I'm talking about making it more minimalist, rather than winding all through the park.
Okay.
I want the people to wind through the park.
One quick question.
Yeah.
If we did shorten the road, what would happen to, what was proposed to happen on the, the rest of the road that extends up? Would that just turn, would you just turn that back into grass?
Yeah, we could go back to prairie, there isn't, well, for maintenance purposes, we would leave it, what, so, I think a better example would be here on this existing conditions. This is a, a road that was installed back in the 50s, this one right here, but it's not gravelled, it's not maintained, it, it's more, it's almost like a trail, so we would probably leave it like that for maintenance purposes, but I think we would go with some sort of limestone border around the edge, so, so that people don't just drive into the prairie and do donuts and all that.
And the shelters that are further up, you would just tear those out, the old ones?
So, there, there, there isn't, there's a frame here.
Yeah, a frame, yeah.
But, we would, we would, yeah, definitely take out the, that infrastructure that's there.
Sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, there was note, there was some reference to RCB, RCPD being consultant about the road and everything, so they need to also be reinforcing the rules and regulations that we have in the park, because I think that was one of the problems in the past also, and as far as I'm, and if they were comfortable with that, I think that's one of the things I was basing my decision on, was that lighting is probably also a good thing to have there. I don't know, we didn't talk much about lighting, I don't know how lighting is right now.
I believe we talked about it at the last work session, and it was not well-received. It is a natural park, I believe this, there's a local club that uses a telescope club, they go out there, it's, they don't want to see a whole lot of lighting out there, is what, what I've heard from interacting throughout this master plan process. In regards to the road, yeah, it's something we can definitely explore.
Not even sensory lighting, like if you're walking and the light comes on?
I don't, so...
When you go down to Emporia, and there's these courses inside of the city, are these single-use or multiple-use parks?
I, I'm not very familiar as what's, what's at in Emporia. I think that probably is a question to one of the disc golf players that have been out there.
Okay. And then, what kind of parking facilities would be reasonable for one of these disc golf courses? How many stalls, for example?
It's going to depend on the, on the use. We are looking to expand this parking over here on the northeast side, looking to make it a little bit more defined where, where those parking stalls are. Right now, with, with the current use of the nine-hole disc golf, it could use some expanding, but those tournament plays, definitely, it would have to be something that's similar to out there at the, with the cross-country, you know, those bigger tournaments that maybe happen once or twice a year, where you would open up and park out here in the prairie. And same goes out here with this parking lot, there wasn't a whole lot of, people didn't really want to see that expanded either, but we could definitely do something to make it more, define those stalls better. Something similar that we've done, like in Griffith Park or Annaberg Park, in the gravel areas.
Well, I think the matrix is a good idea, but the problem with the matrix is, unless you weight each one of those factors, and those are very subjective, it's very difficult to make something out of the, out of the matrix. But, again, it was, it's a good tool to have, and I think it's very useful for our purposes.
Yeah, this matrix was definitely based off of our GIS, GIS data. A lot of that data the city uses in Public Works to keep track of streets, to keep track of a whole lot of things, and so, we use that information, that's where we went for our information, it's data that's there. You could, you could measure there, for example, in the red, when slopes measure over 10%. So, that's, all of, all of those parameters that were seen in the matrix stemmed from this more detailed...
Yeah. Well, my point is, if you weight one of those factors more than the other, then the numbers at the end change, so that's, that's the point I wanted to make. I'm also not swayed by the safety. I think as Commissioner McKee pointed out, not only there, but at, at baseball games, we had young people and even older people hurt all the time. But, nonetheless, I, I think it's important to establish the nature and the character of our parks. We've kind of said what we want in City Park, maybe less or so in others, and here, we've got what I consider a natural park, and I, I just think that that's the way it ought to stay. I would say that we've got work to do, I've been up there a couple times, just to walk through, and when you look at roads and parking, you know, a City Park, as Commissioner Morris said, we, we said last time that we don't want that road to do anything more than to get you into a venue, and that's it. In other words, we don't want people driving through the park, we don't want paving in there, but we do have facilities in that park on purpose. In other parks, we've got playground equipment for the kids, even in Northeast Park, we've got some minimal equipment up there. Here, we've got some work to do, you know, we've got some dilapidated shelters and things that need to be cleaned up. What I'd like to see are some latrines and expanded parking, but no road. You know, I just, if, if you go into the edge, either in the northeast or the southwest corner of that park, my argument would be, you, you can walk through that park and not have to take your car halfway. So, that's the way I'd like to see it now. I'd also like to see an 18-hole course, but I think we need to expand our thinking just a little bit. I think when you look around Riley or Pot County, we can find some places, and after all, this is a regional approach. So, when people come to this region, they can be accommodated at, at university, they can be accommodated at Fremont, all these other places and at the park, but I think we need to look at that, because there's a lot of places that are relatively uninhabited that also offer some opportunities for maybe larger parking facilities. And I'd also say that we don't want to spend a heck of a lot of money, and just my quick analysis of Schultz Park, there's a lot of work that would have to be done going up and down to make that thing reasonable for walking and, and lanes for disc golf, so I'm a little bit more inclined to look at more rolling terrain. Even Northeast Park has got some tremendous capabilities on the southern end that aren't used for baseball and softball and just other kinds of recreational sports with just a few number of people. So, that's kind of my feeling about it, but again, I'd like to see that park stay natural and not expand into disc golf. So, now, I'll just go back to you and ask if you've got enough to proceed with and...
I believe so. Wyatt, if you have any other comments, I think we...
No, I didn't, but it was inherent, I just was supporting the Parks and Rec Plan, so basically, you know, I'm all for, as the mayor said, the restroom up in that northeast corner, expanded parking lot, but leave the road alone.
Okay.
What do you think?
I didn't know.
She's minimalist, she said. All right. Well, I thank everybody again, I mean, the commissioners here have all thanked you, but we really appreciate everybody coming and voicing an opinion, and hopefully, we didn't offend anybody with our arguments here, but we appreciate all of your input. This is the way that our community is supposed to work, so thank you very much for coming, and we stand adjourned.